There are underground utilities right in the spot that they had proposed to put that. And we feel that the design folks should have caught that. So Keith is looking through that. We're hoping that this cost does not come before you. We feel that that's on them. So Keith is working through that. The doors, the folding doors, this was actually a discussion, I'm sorry to see Councilman Palmer not here, we discussed this during way back on the design phase of this project. The folding doors are something that has been incorporated in many fire stations around us, Boise in particular. They're really neat looking. They have a lower maintenance cost. But outside of that, when we designed this station, we didn't know of any other benefit to them. Chief Butterfield has been researching this. And as I spoke with our council liaison about my intrigue in these doors, is they open in about seven seconds. Standard garage doors open in anywhere from 21 to 35 seconds. So doesn't seem like a lot at all. But in our business, when second counts getting out of the station, it's a big deal. And so Chief Butterfield's looking at that. Again, that would come before you for consideration and discussion. So I want to make you aware of that, that we are looking into it. Tonight, we are asking for a change order approval for the second fire hydrant. And it is a cost of $37,000, I'm getting older, $37,678. Why the cost to put in a fire hydrant? It's 331 linear feet that this line would be laid to put in the hydrant. I worked with Stacy to get more information because I kind of asked the same question. Why so high? What's the cost involved? This is a four feet down that you have to bury this. And what you have to do with the hydrant line is jacket it, meaning there has to be a pipe around the pipe to protect it. That's a big part of the cost. So this cost includes labor, materials, all the above. So I'm certainly happy to stand for any questions on the fire hydrant.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions?
Mr. President.
Cavanaugh.
Question either for Chief or Bill. Seems like you're bringing us kind of like a provisional vote then before you bring us a budget amendment? Is that what we're doing here?
Councilman Cavanaugh, I can chime in, then certainly Bill can as needed too. This isn't a budget amendment. This is within the contingency funds that have been approved. So it's not a budget amendment. It's not asking for new dollars.
Mr. President. So you're basically asking us for our approval to spend dollars that are in a contingent budget that have already been allocated?
In a nutshell, yes. Yes, sir.
I think we brought this up a while back on a different project with trying to have change orders brought to us and presented.
Yep.
At least have us on the record affirm approval of them.
Mr. President, that was why we pulled it from last week. It was on the consent agenda. The mayor and I had a discussion. We didn't know that you liked to hear the change orders, so that's why we pulled it and brought it tonight.
That's great.
Mr. President. Just a quick question. Has this been compared to the price to what we've done at previous stations? Is the price in line? Is it more because it's a contingency, because it's later in the process, or because they can, because it can, I guess?
Yeah. I haven't researched our other projects. Last time we built a fire station was 10 years ago. Certainly, we rely on Public Works and some of their input on what the cost is to put in lines like this and hydrants. And there was nothing alerted out of the ordinary. Unfortunately, materials have gone up in 10 years, the cost of them, especially now, even home builders are finding that out. So we didn't hear anything that alarmed us that this is out of line with previous.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Information needed?
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we approve the $37,678 for the change order.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve item 65A. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Mylum.
Hi.
Councilmember Burton.
Hi.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Hi.
Councilmember Cavanaugh.
Hi.
Great, thank you. And we look forward to coming back and updating you. The good news is, we're on time and on budget, so.
Can I ask you a question while you're here? The venting system is a part of this as well, right? Station 6?
That's included in our original design.
Sure.
As far as our other stations go, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last update I got is they have all been installed. They're all attached. We have one fire engine that had to have a modification of their exhaust system to attach, but everything's been done.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, good news.
Good to hear. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number 5B. This is kind of the continuation of our process if council has questions and ideas they want to bring forward for discussion. This one came up from Councilwoman Mylum, who's, oh, she's going to the podium. I love it. So if you recall, a couple of months back, there was remarks that surrounded dogs off leash and the consequence of dogs off leash, and are there better ways to address it or deter it? And making sure that stayed on the radar. Genesis, the floor is yours.
Council President, members of the council, good afternoon. Thanks for having me this afternoon. It feels really weird being over here, and I wrote some stuff down because you guys are really intimidating.
[laughing]
All right, so, and this seems really loud. I'm here to discuss with you today a possible amendment to City Code 6-2-8 DE, which are basically dog at large, and maybe G, which is dog rushing, to increase the fine amounts. The reason I feel that we need to increase the fines is due to extreme number of people who do not abide by the law. And I've seen so many, what brought this about to me is I saw so many posts on Nexor and hearing people's stories that are getting attacked by dogs, or kids are getting attacked by dogs, or dogs are getting attacked by dogs, and just going, taking their, just walking down the street, being rushed at, and either scared, you know, and psychologically, have psychological trauma or physical harm. I've got a couple, okay, so I got two pages and just a very quick couple-minute search of all of these different quotes from different people who have been attacked by dogs just within the recent month or so. And I'm just going to read a couple of them to you. "Today, my children and tiny dog were attacked by a dog. A man walking three dogs, one unleashed, could have caused my children lots of harm. We are animal lovers but also responsible pet owners. I don't want to turn this into a long rant, but I simply feel that people need to be responsible pet owners. My daughter is very brave to fight the dog, but it could have been tragic for all involved." So that's just part of one. "My puppy and I were charged three times today by the same dog, racing toward us, teeth bared. The dog came from around the corner the first time, owner not in sight. The last two times, he raced across the street toward us. We were on the sidewalk. He said, 'No worries, she won't bite.'" Well, that wasn't the impression the dog was giving us. And another one, "I was running with my dog this afternoon around 3:00, and we were both attacked by a dog. The owner had his dog off-leash and was 20-plus feet behind the dog." So this is just, it's becoming more and more common. I was, yes, I go for a walk every day, and I see this firsthand. I personally haven't had any run-ins, but I see it, I see it all the time, and it could happen, and especially to our children. So I think this is a matter of public safety. And they're crying for help, they're asking on the Nexor, they're saying, "Why isn't anybody doing anything about this?" So my hope is that if we increase the fine enough, it will prevent many of the circumstances that are causing the incidents, because less pet owners will let their dogs roam without a leash. The current off-leash penalty is $25 for the first offense, $50 for the second offense, and $100 for the third offense. And I am proposing like 300, 500, and 1,000 at a minimum. And the point isn't really to make a lot of money, it's to be high enough that people will be discouraged from doing it in the first place. If we can prevent dogs being off-leash, then we can prevent dogs attacking people. I would like the city to use all of its media resource outlets to publicize it and educate our citizens so they know that this is what it is, and really, it's about prevention. However, if fees are collected, I would like the money to go towards our contract with the Humane Society, which we already have, which would then potentially save taxpayer dollars that we allocate towards that every year. There's also in 6-2-8S, removal of dog feces. Now, this one is a little bit in jest, but doesn't have to be. We could include a penalty of picking up dog feces in public parks or other public places if you get caught not picking up your own.
Your own or the dog's?
Your own dogs. But thanks, Greg. Councilwoman Burton, I'm not asking for any action, just simply wanted to see if you as a body think this would be something to discuss further and have a public hearing on. I'll stand for questions.
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. President.
Hold your mic.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mylum, which one were you referring to regarding the, is it the dog? Were you referring to E, dog at large on, would that impact E, dog at large on private?
Well, the private property, Councilwoman, sorry, Mr. President, Councilwoman Little Roberts, the E is not your own private property, it's somebody else's private property. And it's if you don't have permission to allow your dog on that property. So I think that it should. Again, this is all, we can discuss all of the particulars on how that would be at a later date, but I did put it in there because it's still a dog at large off of leash. And I don't think, I mean, if they can't be on the sidewalk, why would it be okay for me to let them into my neighbor's yard?
Follow-up?
Sure.
Well, like, community parks that are owned by the subdivision, we live right across the road from one, and we've got a lot of people that off-leash very safely work their dogs in that park. And I'm just worried that, because it's really kind of fun watching them. We've never had one single complaint, and I'm concerned that that would impact the opportunity that these people, including myself, have on working their dogs in the park that's within a community.
So that's private property, oh, sorry, that is.
You bet.
Councilwoman Roberts, well, that's the harder part. That is private property, correct? So if the HOA allows that, would be my assumption? And again, I appreciate you bringing that up, because those are details that we do need to look into. However, personally, same thing goes for me when I'm on my walks. There's somebody that's constantly out there with a dog off-leash, and the dog comes chasing at me, pushing the stroller with the baby, hasn't bared teeth or attacked me, but it's a little startling sometimes, and owner yells at them, and they usually retrieve. But, you know, personally, I think that we have amazing dog park, and, you know, we need more. We have another one out of Discovery now, so there are a couple of places to do dog training. It's definitely something to consider in our findings.
If I understand what you're saying, as to DE and G, any or all of those, it's not an ask to make a new prohibition, to ban something that otherwise was lawful, but just to raise the fine on what is already prohibited?
Sure, yes, of course, sir.
For the deterrent effect? I think E prevents me going to your HOA and bringing my dog. I don't think it prevents you. That's probably a Mr. Neri question, but. I think it's great to have a public hearing on raising these amounts for that purpose and getting some awareness to the problem and perhaps maybe a chilling effect on folks even with good intentions who let their dogs run down the street. We've been attacked, our dog's been attacked, same thing multiple times, happens all the time. So it's, I think it's worthy of a discussion. Increase the fines, and if people say, "Oh, my God, that's so expensive," good. Have that conversation.
Thank you. Council President, Borden. And that's exactly the purpose, is really to just discourage it from happening. It is happening too much, and hopefully, we can get some people that have been, like yourself, who have actually been attacked, to come and share their stories and give their feedback on that as well.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neri.
Mr. President, members of the council, Councilwoman Mylum, only thing I was going to mention on the fines, so currently, our dog at large in a public place is an infraction. So the maximum fine for an infraction in the state of Idaho is $300. So if you want to leave it as an infraction, just understand that's the maximum fine. If you want to leave it as a graduated fine, you could certainly go 50, 100, 300, whatever you want, as long as you understand the max is 300, unless you want to make it a misdemeanor on the third offense or something like that, then it becomes a jailable offense, and that's concerning, you know, we were asked a number of years ago by the state legislature to try to eliminate as many city misdemeanors as we felt reasonably possible. And so this is one that I think has always been an, well, I take it back, it hasn't always been an infraction, it was a misdemeanor. But this is one that we did downgrade to an infraction, so you can still use the fine as a deterrent, just understand what your maximum is. On the other ones, they are misdemeanors at a certain level. I mean, some of them require a second offense, but the maximum on misdemeanors are $1,000 and six months in jail. So you do have more flexibility to change the penalty on the ones that are already misdemeanors, and that was still aligned with state code.
Council President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanaugh.
Good job.
Thanks.
I'm so proud of you. You did so good with this. I just, it was awesome to see, and thanks for bringing this. This was something that you look at, and it's like, oh, maybe there's some inconsistencies here in our code that we can fix and clean up. Something wasn't on my radar, but I am 100% supportive of having a public hearing on. I don't know if I'm sold on this $300, $500,000 business, but some conversations hearing from the public is something that I'm supportive of. I don't know if you know, and if you do, I'd love to hear it, and if not, I think this is a topic to be covered at the public hearing, is how many citations have been written?
Yeah.
I appreciate your recommendation that the funds go to the Humane Society. I've been pretty vocal on the record about what I think is kind of the lack of their service that they're providing to us and our citizens. If I'm wrong on this particular piece, it's going to be a great place to see it. But if I'm right, I don't know if any change is going to warrant the intended outcome that we want, except for that people are going to be educated. And if our goal then is education, well, then let's work with our public information officer and just start educating the public. So that's where I am. I, nobody knows this, but when I was five years old, I got attacked by a dog. Name was Rooster, toward my butt. I still got a scar, I won't show it to any of you, but it's there. My younger brother was attacked by a pit bull in his face when he was 12 years old. Both were well-behaved, according to the owners, very nice, friendly dogs. That weren't those two days. And so anything we can do to educate the public, one, something I support. I'm going to need a little more information about where we head in terms of code before I can be fully behind it.
Council President. So a couple of things, and I agree with you about the education part. I mean, that is a lot of this, but also needs to be education that is scary enough that you don't want to have the consequences, which is why the large fine. I don't want to make it a misdemeanor. We don't want to go backwards. We did just change this. I did speak with the chief, and he's willing to speak at the public hearing as well. I don't think he would support it becoming a misdemeanor, and I don't know if there's a way to just do like, maybe just, maybe on your third offense, it becomes at a thousand level, it comes as misdemeanors, or something like that. I don't think starting off too low is a good idea either. And I agree, most dogs, I'm an animal lover, and most dogs are nice dogs, they're nice until they're not. And you don't know what it's going to take to antagonize them or to get them off that day and make them attack, so.
Mr. President, one thing, Ted, I don't know if you're looking for other people to help you with this, but just know I'm happy to help and assist if you're looking for extra set of hands on this.
Thank you very much.
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaugh. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President.
Yep, Mr. Burton.
So I'm in agreement with Councilmember Cavanaugh. I think he explained it perfectly. I also, I, you know, I think most people don't even register their dogs, let alone want to pay 500 bucks to pay it, you know, as a fine of some type when they bite another person or a dog. And so I, the only thing that I'm concerned about is the amount. So maybe you bring back some information in regard to, you know, just increase the last five years, three years, last year, whatever, from the Humane Society. I'm sure they have that data. That would be really interesting to know.
Awesome.
Looking.
So it sounds like there's some consensus to bring this back for a public hearing, gather info, discuss it more, and then make a decision.
Good. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neri.
I take it from the tenor of the conversation, the council isn't requesting we draft ordinance to have a public hearing, but merely advertise a public hearing on the subject matter?
Correct.
And then decide at that point whether a change is necessary.
Correct. If there's going to be a change, it's pretty minor to the existing legislation.
That's what I thought.
This will come back.
Yeah.
Thanks, Genesis. Item 5C, community development, draft ordinance on back with compression brakes.
So, Mr. President, members of the council, I offer to present this because it's really at the draft ordinance stage that's in your packet. You may recall, a number of months ago, we had a discussion with you regarding compression brakes, and we had some people that had an interest in the 10-mile Chindon area about a compression brake ordinance. And part of the conversation was that the ACHD will post in cities where there are compression brake ordinances, a no-compression-brake-use sign, and the city of Meridian doesn't have one, so we didn't have a sign in the city. The sign is literally on the edge of the city, on Chindon, near Highway 16, but not within the city limits. So we drafted this ordinance, we actually took it to Transportation Commission. The chair, Mr. Ballard of the commission, works very heavily with the trucking industry, so he had some good insight and some good suggestions for the ordinance, which we have incorporated. There are two exclusions, and those are really for public transit, so we're talking about buses and things like that, as well as the fire department, because our fire engines, all fire engines have compression brakes. So we want to make sure that those two types of vehicles are excluded from this. But the ordinance is in front of you for your review. Again, we're, we want to schedule it for either public hearing or passage or both. We certainly can do that.
Thanks, Bill.
Council, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanaugh.
And maybe this is for the public hearing, but as I recall from being at the Transportation Commission, it was pretty clear that we don't have the resources nor the ability to enforce an ordinance like this. Get the sign up, you educate the public, but unless you've got an officer that's there that witnesses it, that has nothing else on their plate for them to enforce, this largely goes unenforced. I, I think like all of us often weigh enabling or enacting new ordinances for the sake of doing it. I'm one that typically leans towards passing them if there's a public health benefit. I haven't heard yet what the public health benefit is. So I'm a little reluctant to head down this path, although we would, in a public hearing, have the opportunity to learn what, if any, public health benefit an ordinance like this has, and maybe would allow the chief or PD to come and provide testimony about their ability to enforce this. As I understand, in a lot of municipalities that have this, it either falls into one of two categories. It's very, very heavy-handed, or it's not really addressed at all. So I think those are some areas we should be concerned about.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
If I'm remembering correctly, I think Chief Levy, in his testimony to us, said that, I think if I'm remembering correctly, he wasn't in favor of it because of the difficulty of, you know, managing it, you know?
Just remember, it was Transportation or City Council.
Yeah. So I think that Chief Levy mentioned that he probably wasn't a big fan of this ordinance. Maybe he's changed his mind. Maybe he's 100% behind it.
Any other counsel direction, if you want to see this to come back, or just end it and move on?
Mr. President.
Sorry. Mr. President, I believe because this came from our Transportation Commission, it's worthy of a landing on a public hearing. I'm not, I don't think at this time in support of it, but I believe in trusting the process and allowing something that comes from one of our commissions to land before the public for consideration. So I'm supportive of that aspect, that narrow aspect.
Any other direction, up or down? Bring it back for a first read and see what happens? It's drafted. Sound good?
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Maybe that we get it drafted at a point in time that Transportation Commission Ballard is back in town. I think he's out of town right now. It might be beneficial to have someone from the Transportation Commission, you're, to kind of just close the loop on that entire process.
At the first read?
The first read, yeah.
Mr. President, we could ask our lieutenant in the room, but he has an opinion on this either way.
You know, I don't have a huge opinion on it. It's not something that we've got a lot of calls on for people in the community complaining about. It would be something that would be hard to enforce unless we focused on like a directed for a day in reference to it. But I know there hasn't been a lot of complaints from the community that I'm aware of in reference to the compression brakes.
Mr. President.
If I recall from, Ted Baird from my office is one that staffs the Transportation Commission. I think the chair, Mr. Ballard, is out of the country, I think, almost the entire month of September. So it may be towards the end of September or the first of October, if you're okay with that. But we are happy to coordinate that with his schedule.
October it is. Any other questions from council on this one?
Nope.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Item 5D, this is coming back to us, the benefit trust agreement discussion in the packet, the trust agreement, I believe the bylaws are uploaded for our review, and, Bill, I think you're going to pick it up.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. So what you have in front of you is two documents. One is seeking council's approval, and one is for your information in regards to the bylaws. So the trust agreement is the founding document to establish the benefits trust that's necessary for the Department of Insurance to approve the city being a partially self-funded trust. The bylaws are the operating rules for the trustees. And so the intent is with, as you can imagine with a lot of these, the benefits trust agreement would likely be approved and then not likely amended much. Again, it's supposed to be the founding document to begin the trust. The bylaws may change as processes change or procedures change. We had one issue that was of concern to the finance department, and we did reach out to our outside counsel, Mr. West, about it. And part of it is, is the current process for the city and how we fund benefits is done in a way that it's paid, the employee pays at the end of the month. And so the state requires that the payments be uploaded at the beginning of the month, and the state, of course, is wanting to assure that any trust that's out there has the financial capability to pay the claims that are going to be forthcoming. And so that the, so I got an email from Mr. Lavoy this afternoon saying, okay, now they understand that we'll have to sit down and figure out how we're going to make that work, but we'll figure out a way to make that work. It isn't the way we currently do things, but if we have to comply with the statute, we have to comply. So the agreement, I think, our recommendation from outside counsel was, the way it is currently drafted in front of you is compliant with the state code, and that is his recommendation is to move that forward. And like I said, we'll work out the details with the finance department, anticipating at a future point, there will probably come another agreement that will come in front of you between the benefits trust and the city for those services and how they're going to get done, completed, and paid for, or whatever, how that's going to be done. So you probably will see something about the operational piece later, but this intent was simply to get the basics of the agreement, the foundation of the benefits trust moving forward, so we can submit it to the Department of Insurance for their review. They've already reviewed the trustees, and this is another step in the chain. As with any agency of that size, it does take a little bit of time, so we want to try to keep this moving as much as possible. So we were asking for your approval of the trust agreement tonight. If you need some time to digest it, I know I sent it to you, I think, last Thursday. Certainly, one week won't really delay things, but we would like to keep this moving so we can make sure this gets approved timely.
Sure. Thanks, Bill. Christina, pop in the back. Did you have anything you wanted to add or comment on it? Any questions or concerns raised by any of the trustees about any of its language of either document?
Mr. President, members of council, great question. So we actually, the four of us met with Mr. West. We had a few questions about some of the language and some of the way it was originally drafted, because he used sort of a model they used before, and so we tried to craft it and personalize it to Meridian. And so we had, he made all those changes that were requested, so they have been seen. This issue with finance did come up from the finances review, and so, again, we have to comply with state code, so we will work out those details and make that work. So that isn't, it isn't a hurdle that we think we can overcome.
Is it any potential change to the language that would come from finance that necessitates us waiting a week and making sure that's totally buttoned up?
So, Mr. President, members of the council, we actually asked finance for language that would suit them. Unfortunately, that language would be noncompliant with the code. So that's why I think Mr. Lavoy's view was, we'll figure that out. Well, we're going to have to meet and figure that out, so we're going to have to do that. But there wouldn't be a change to the agreement, because the agreement has to comply with the statute.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Little Roberts.
Mr. President, Mr. Neri, I was just kind of surprised in reading the trust membership regarding the term, that trustees would serve until death incapacity, dah dah dah, but nothing about leaving the city, because that seemed to be a major concern, that it only be employees serving as trustees to start with. So Section 2, 2.2.
Of the trust or of the bylaws? It's in both.
Of the...
Sorry, D.
Trust, bylaws, sorry.
So, Mr. President, Members of the Council, Councilwoman Little Roberts, so we talked about that, and we were looking, originally, some trust agreements have terms, but Mr. West didn't recommend terms, periods, because, again, most of these are, the same people tend to just do it until they don't want to do it anymore. We could certainly add, if you'd prefer resignation from the city. We presume, obviously, if they're resigning and they're not eligible any longer, they're not eligible, so, because they have to be part of the trust to be a trustee. So they can't be a trustee, a trust, in the trust if they're not an employee. But certainly if that would make you more comfortable, we could ask them to add that addition, because we've, again, felt they weren't going to be a member of the city, they weren't eligible to be in it. So, but we can add that.
Okay.
Good to clarify that.
Thank you.
Couldn't hurt to add that. I think, I see Section 3.?
3.4.
Or of the trusts, yeah, cover that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Bill, I did have a question. Section 3.6 in the agreement, to me, appears to conflict with 2.4 in the bylaws. 3.6 says that a trustee can be removed from office by a majority vote of the city council. In the bylaws, it says that it is removed by a notice from the mayor.
So, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. So the, and what was the number in the bylaws?
Mr. President, Bill, it's 3.6 of the, of the agreement to 2.4 in the bylaws.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Councilman Cavanagh, thank you for that catch. We had discussed that originally with Mr. West, because some benefit plans have that authority with the mayor. We suggested it should actually belong with the council. So the agreement is correct, that's, the intent was the council. So I'll ask him to change the bylaw one to reflect that be the same. We felt that since the council's approving the trust, approving the agreement, approve the original trustees and any subsequent trustees, that it would be the same reason for removal, that it would all flow through the city council, not the mayor. So we will fix that, it was just an oversight, because I know we talked about it with him.
Mr. President, additional question, more just about process in the bylaws, it talks about that these are public meetings. So my assumption is we would post them like we would post any other commission, committee meeting that we have here at City Hall.
Yes, Mr. President, Councilmember Cavanagh, they are, they do fall under the open meeting laws.
Any other questions, counsel? One question on the trust agreement, Section 4.2 references the amendment process where the trust, the agreement can be amended by the trustees as opposed to by the council?
So, Mr. President, Members of the Council, I don't recall us discussing that. So what I think would make more sense is it would be then with approval of the city council, because again, a re-ad amendment to the agreement, I think would come back to the city council. The intention of the bylaws was to have the trustees manage that piece, but the agreement itself, which again is the foundation of the Benefits Trust itself, I think should have to come back to the council, so we could definitely amend 4.2.
Any other questions of counsel? Good work by the crew getting this put together. This is a lot of structure and bones to make this thing successful.
Almost there.
Would it make sense, Bill, that with these changes, to have it come back on September 4th?
Yeah. Mr. President, that was our intent, we would bring it back next Tuesday.
Allow it to kind of be cleaned up and make those few corrections, okay. Great. Any other questions, counsel, on language operations?
Good work, appreciate you bringing this back to us.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Christina. September 4th, 3rd?
3rd.
3rd. That's the end of the work session agenda. We have an executive session?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move that we go into executive session per Idaho State Code 74-206-1D and 1F.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session as stated. Mr. Kurt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.